No. I have a special T-shirt if I can.
Okay. Welcome to the May 9, 2017 Meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. We opened the meeting shortly after 6:00 PM and immediately went into executive session for reasons three and number six pursuant to General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. And we came out of executive session at about 10:00 of 7:00, and we recessed until now. May we have another roll call, please?
Present for Selectmen, Selectman Scasiotti is not here tonight. Town Administrator, Town Council is here.
Okay, it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lots of new victims out there. Michaela.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements.
Who's first?
Your first.
All right, so I was doing some reading and I want to, you know, even if this doesn't get out there very much and people don't watch this very much, it's something that needs to be said and people need to pay attention, and especially the people that are in the midst of some kind of crisis relevant to opioids. Illegal new drug dubbed, illegal new drug dubbed gray death by authorities is dangerous to even touch without gloves, is being eyed in overdose cases across Georgia, Alabama, and Ohio so far. Investigators say the high potency cocktail which comprises of heroin, fentanyl, elephant tranquilizer otherwise is known as carfentanil, and a synthetic opioid called U47700 can kill a user with a single dose. And kids, so far Georgia and Atlanta and Alabama and Ohio have people, kids dying first time, done, gone. No Narcan, no anything, nobody gets to them, it's just gone. And this is really sad. I mean, it's, you know, the drugs aren't strong enough that they gotta keep making them stronger, you know, and this is just, just very, very sad and I, you know, we've tried everything, everybody, I have no idea where to go, what to do with this, but I guess we gotta keep talking about it and keep getting the word out and hopefully maybe some kid will say, hey, you know, maybe I shouldn't touch this, because you can't even touch this stuff with gloves on. That's how dangerous it is. And I don't know what else to say, I just want everybody to be aware it's out there. If, look, if you run into the case where you see somebody dealing whatever, look, turn them in right away, right away, because they're killers. They are killers. And they should be treated as such. All right, that's all I have to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Selectman Whiteside?
Thank you. Wareham Community for Outdoor Recreation known as CORE is a nonprofit which is raising money to rebuild Lopes Playground. Seventy-five thousand dollars was approved in October for the deliverables of engineering, et cetera, and the 501(c)(3), the charity or the charitable, the nonprofit, has committed to raising the money. The first real fundraiser is unveiled already, it's a raffle. The first prize is a thousand dollars, the second prize is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the third prize is five hundred dollars. Only five hundred tickets will be sold and the drawing will be on June 15th. The tickets cost twenty-five dollars apiece.
Where are the tickets available?
The tickets are available at Gallery Consignment at the Onset Bay Association office and a couple of other places which are thinking about letting, you know, letting us use that, letting the group use that.
You might want to make this a weekly announcement up until the raffle?
I think I probably will, thank you. The other thing I think, I hate to be Nancy Downer following on Mr. Troppiano's comments, but I have to remind people that joking about death, terrorism, religion, race, creed, nationality, and probably gender identification, you can't do it. It's very different than it was even five years ago. So, kids make mistakes, we all make mistakes, but some of the recent mistakes by children in this community will have lifelong repercussions for them. And if you were alive when John Kennedy was assassinated, and some of us were, if you were alive when 9/11 happened, and everybody in this room was, if you were anywhere near the Olympics being blown up, it's not something we joke about. Kindness should be contagious, not fear and terrorism.
Thank you. Selectman Slavin?
Good evening, everybody, we can start smiling again. The old person's gotta try, read something maybe. Wareham Recycling Drop-Off Center is open Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, Saturday 9:00 to 1:00 PM, accepting all recyclable items. We also take paint, tires, fluorescents, electronics, white goods, and lead core batteries for a small fee. We are the only facility in the area that accepts paint. We have a swap shed and a book barn with hundreds of great used books. Drop in and see what we're all about.
Yes, sure, again.
Can we get a different reporter? Okay, next on the list, YMCA, run for the challenge yourself. Armed Forces Day 5K Road Race, May 20th. Cleveland Family YMCA, the race begins at Onset Village promptly at 9:00 AM. Registration is twenty-five dollars for adult before April 28, thirty dollars after April 28. Children under fourteen is fifteen dollars before April 28, seventeen dollars after. Military with valid ID or a veteran, twenty dollars, walk or run, no deadline. Can be done also online at theymcacoast.org. Free T-shirts for the first 200 entrants, raffles and prizes available. Next, we have a fundraiser for the veterans, Council for the Moving Wall, Wednesday, which is tomorrow, at the Onset VFW Post, Ford Gibbs Ballpark Road, and it will be the International Muscher Hugh Neff of Laughing Eyes Kennel and Tok, nice name, Alaska, wow. Lecture and Film with Question Answers begins at 7:00 PM. Accompanying Hugh will be Brother Dogs, Lester, and Amigo, Amigo actually, it should be, sorry. Signed copies of his book and other merchandise will be available for sale. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, students ten, children under ten dollars free. If you want to get there a little bit early, they have a, I think it's a chicken barbecue dinner at six, I think it's six dollars?
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars now? Oh, it's 6:00 PM, sorry. I'll get there. Please consider this as part of your evening out. First come, first served until the food is gone. Thank you, dear.
You're welcome, dear.
Anytime. All right, we have one other event, also I believe the person is here about the Cape Flyer with the veteran train. Why don't you come up to the table, I'm gonna give out some information, and we might as well have you speak with us right after me because it'll make more sense that way. Just give me a few minutes and I've got a-
An announcement.
Yeah, you can read that, and I'm just gonna read off what we already started to work on. Okay, I'll go first and you can go second if that works.
An announcement.
Yep. We have for Memorial Day, basically our veterans groups, the American Legion and the VFW normally go around to the different cemeteries and place the flags and they, we usually have a trumpeter that, you know, basically blows taps, and then we also shoot off, usually there's four of the veterans shooting off at least two rounds of guns and stuff. It's been more and more difficult over the last four or five years to get anybody to show up at all, and it's really kinda disappointing. Continuing with my other fellow selectmen about things in general, it's really disappointing that people forget that we all have all these different things that we can do and have abilities to do in the life we have, it's only because of all those people who sacrificed, you know, previously to get us to this point. Some gave their lives, some came back and were never the same anymore, and we really need to show respect for the veterans and what they did. The Cape Cod Flyer, this will be year number two, is basically starting out of Boston on the 28th, which is Sunday. They bring veterans down, stopping in Brockton, stopping in Wareham, Buzzers Bay, then onto Hyannis, there's a special event there. All the veterans go on the train for free, both ways, not just one way. And what we've done here for Wareham, I've worked the last four or five days putting together, we have the fire department honor guard, we have the police honor guard, I've got the, I believe it's the American Legion is gonna bring out some of their people to actually shoot at the train basically. The high school is gonna have a band there, the ROTC is also gonna have an honor guard as well, and it'd be a nice thing to do. What I would appreciate is if some of the people in town would also come out there to show their appreciation. The train, I think last year had over 300 veterans on it. Go ahead, sir.
First, I'd like to thank you for letting me come here to speak to you. I am from Bowen, that's where I live, but Wareham holds a special place for me. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I served in the service for seven years in the United States Air Force. I'm a Vietnam veteran, I flew out, played, worked on the planes, flew out, played, too. I just had a reunion with nine of my pilots after all these years down in Florida. When I got back, I got stationed at Otis and this is where I met my wife, she's from Wareham. If there's anyone originally been from Wareham a long time, might know my father-in-law, his name was Everett Carmen, he was the mortician for Cornwells.
I know who that is.
And my mother-in-law worked for Melody's Flower Shop for years. I retired from the post office here in Wareham, so I probably delivered a lot of mail to where you live. You're right about Memorial Day. I got started on this when I worked for the post office. Memorial Day, I was having people come into the post office buy stamps and said, couldn't wait till summer started, have their parties on Memorial Day, and summer end had it on Labor Day, and people forgot what Memorial Day was about. So through the permission of the post office, I did a huge display and it went over well. Second year, I tried to do better, which I think we accomplished. We went with the help of your library here in the historical section and permission with the Wareham Courier, we did a whole book on veterans that served during World War II out of Wareham, and not just them, the Vietnam veterans, Korean veterans and stuff. We made posters up, we had displays out there, and went over well. And I found out something, in a small town like Wareham, forty-eight family members, brothers and sisters, two brothers, two brothers and a cousin, all served during World War II out of Wareham. We did posters for the World War II veterans. Fortunately, very gratefully, no one died during the Korean War from Wareham. You had seven Vietnam veterans from Wareham, four that grew up here and went to school here. The other three were dual residents, they summered here and lived in Framingham and Tonton, but they have overpasses named after them here. So that's what I did, and that's why I got involved. And I got involved with Cape Cod Cares for the Troops. And over Memorial Day is one of our big fundraisers. We send over twenty-five hundred to three thousand packages a year overseas of all kind of items, from toilet items to paper to notes to balloons for the kids and stuff. Story about that, when I was in Vietnam, I had my parents send me balloons. I didn't think much of it until I went downtown and gave them out. They didn't know what they were. And they became my best friends, so I went downtown to buy something, they wouldn't let the guy jip me. But relationships, that was just one that I had, we're sending school supplies and the relationships that they were building with these young children over there is gonna be a lifetime lasting things on both sides. So we raised not only money to send these packages, we work with the Wounded Warrior Project down Fort Belvoir where they put wounded soldiers with brain injuries, they build houses for them. We go down there, we do their Christmas for them. They're still on military pay, they're not getting VA help and stuff. The wife, it's not the same guy she married, he's brain injured, he's another child, 24/7 care, and they're trying to make a living. So we do their Christmas, nothing comes from the troops, it all comes from Santa, there's no recognition here. They send over something like sixty bicycles down, iPads, computers, TVs, and for the wives, they didn't win anything, but we send in hairdressers, manicurists, have dinner brought in because they can't get out. Gold Star Mothers, we work with them a lot around here. And about three years ago, when we have all that lovely snow, they called out the National Guard. Some of the National Guards get to send National Guard pay when they're away from work. So they went out and raised money and bought certificates for places, grocery places where they can go buy groceries and stuff, and if they needed help, they would request it and we'd do our best to help them. This weekend, on May 28th, Spotlight's in the Troop, it's a 24-hour salute to our veterans overseas. We have a flatbed truck where whoever wants to stand in their uniforms, some are active, some have been discharged, some are retired, some are as old as me that wanna get up there and stand for an hour. And this goes on 24 hours, rain or shine. Our troops fight in the rain, so we stand in the rain. Cold, there's been some bitter cold weekends down there, and, but stand guard. They do at 11:30, honor all the veterans that show up there and salute to them, all except for the Vietnam veterans. On this flyer you'll see there's a special welcome home for the Vietnam veterans at 2:00. They felt that they never got their welcome home, and they did that one year. And it started with about six veterans, and we're, we're working between a hundred, I mean, fifty to a hundred veterans now that are showing up. They march in and they get a special salute, and they get the celebration they never had. It's went so well, they do it every year now, down there. We do get a lot of help with sponsors that help us, local restaurants and stuff do donations so we can do raffles and stuff like that. When I first start working, twelve-year-old boy started this project for a Boy Scout project. And he did six packages and sent them overseas, and he come home and told his mom, we can't stop there. And this is how it's grown. He's out of college now and we're still doing it. He's still the CEO, a hundred percent of all things raised go to the troops. His mother asked him, said, you know, we've grown so much, and I'm running to Providence, I'm running to Boston, I'm running here, she says, I put my kitchen off, it's our supply house now that they built, they got four iPods that you store stuff in down there, donations that we have to sort or get help to sort. She says, I just can't keep forwarding gas. And he says, okay, you can pay for gas as long as I get the slips. And that's your only money that comes out of this. Here to let know, and because it started down there mid-Cape and lower Cape, knew about it, not so much upper Cape, not this way, and I'd like to see that changed. I know there's a lot of friends I've met through Wareham, through the VFWs and Marion when I belonged there, and other organizations around here. I know they wanna help. I know your fire department's helping. I gave flyers to the police off station up here the other day, they were appreciative because I know they hire the vets too. So I'm just here to try to bring attention to this, I hope they can show. My only disappointment is, is it is on this weekend, it's the same day they do the cemetery memorial out there, so I go every other year usually, myself. I used to march in the parades here when Marion, I know we swapped back and forth on Veterans Day, marched out there at Otis, and as my wife says, that's gonna be our condo on the Cape when I leave here. So if you have any questions for me, I try to answer them. It's a nonprofit organization, and they do a lot more than just, just that.
Can you just identify yourself by name, please?
Yep, my name is Charles Sooy, S-O-O-Y, and things.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Well, I appreciate your time, you know, and like you said, Memorial Day is coming, and I know when we, when I was a child, it was a big thing to go out and see the parades and everything, and kinda lost some of that, and lost the meaning of Memorial Day, so hopefully we'll get that back.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Got a public hearing. Well, yeah, we do it 7:15, let me just see if there's any citizen comments, I don't think there are, so we can just get through that. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board tonight? Seeing none. We do have a public hearing at 7:15 on the application of a year-round common victual or all alcoholic beverages licensed from Mark Inc., DBA Ying Dynasty of Wareham, looking to move it to Ying Dynasty Wareham LLC, doing business as Ying Dynasty, so with the folks associated with that application, please come up.
Move, we open a public hearing.
Second.
Requires roll call vote, Selectman Troppiano?
Yes.
Selectman Whiteside?
Yes.
Selectman Slavin?
Yes.
Title bond, yes. The public hearing is now open. Would you identify yourselves for the record, please, gentlemen?
Sure. Attorney Christopher Markey from New Bedford.
Mr. Markey's also elected official.
Yep. Where are that?
For those who don't know.
I'm trying to stay anonymous and-
Not gonna happen.
Yeah, that failed. Already failed. So just if you would explain briefly to the board and the public what you're looking to do here.
Ying has purchased under Zou LLC the property at 265 Marion Road. With that, we want to transfer the liquor license. The liquor license was not owned by the same entity as the property owner. They're all one family, the Mark family, so one was Mark Inc. which owned the liquor license and ran the restaurant. It was a trust, a family trust, that owned the property. So we purchased the property, now we're looking to purchase the liquor license so that he can continue what's been a successful restaurant there.
Okay.
I've gone through all the paperwork, I actually had the office check because we didn't have, we had one tip, the number of hours there. I just have one real question for you. We have the one tip which is for, I believe-
Ying.
For forty hours. Now, the business is open more than forty hours a week, I think.
It would be. Whoever, he will always have someone there with this tip certification.
Okay.
He is aware of that. The other employees, I don't know, I don't think every waitress will have tip certification, but there will be other employees who will have the tip certification.
We probably, whoever's gonna be there in charge, his management, he's not there, probably should get it, the file to us, we have it in this file.
I will do that.
Okay, I just happened to, when the paperwork came in, I noticed there was forty hours and it doesn't quite balance, so everything else is fine to go.
I just have a question, sir. I believe you said that you were purchasing the liquor license, I don't believe that's the terminology you want, you're transferring the liquor license, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we're transferring, he's working out his own deal.
Yes.
Right, but it's, I want the record to be clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are working through that. I also do have, just I know that Janet was looking for the-
The green cards? Yes, she indicated to me today that you might be handing them up to us, which is fine.
I can provide that to you.
Yep. Just put that in the file. Thank you.
Two, two parts, and one green card returned. I did sign an affidavit to say that I did send it out to Mr. Mann.
Yep.
And so, and I did-
It's more than we usually get on the green cards, thank you.
Okay. Make a motion for the Ying Dynasty-
We gotta close the hearing.
We gotta close it. You gotta ask for public input first.
Exactly, yep.
Never mind.
You're jumping the gun here. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody who is opposed to the application?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Can I go now?
Now you can go.
Thank you.
Well, we gotta vote.
We gotta close it with a roll call vote.
Yeah, Troppiano, yes.
I did.
Everybody's gotta say yes.
I said yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
I've been up since five o'clock today.
Jeez, maybe we should designate an alternate clerk.
Go to town.
Are we ready to go?
Yes. Make your motion, sir.
We don't charge an entertainment fee here, by the way.
Gonna start.
Okay, we'll try this again. Ying Dynasty Wareham LLC, doing business as Ying Dynasty, 265 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Manager Ying S. Zhou, hey, how about that? On the following described premises, building is a one-story wooden consisting of dining room, kitchen, storeroom, walk-in, cooler, boiler room, and two restrooms. Building has two entrances and exits. The license is granted except upon express conditions, the license shall in all respects conform to the Vision of Liquor Control Act, Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, and any rules or regulations made there under by the licensing authority. This license expires on Sunday, December 31st, 2017. Unless, in the hours, alcoholic beverages is Sunday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, correct? That's it.
Actually, I think you forgot part of the motion. The hearing was to transfer a year-round common vic license from two.
Yeah, but we just have here is-
I, we had the hearing, but you didn't make the motion. I'm sorry, I'm very picky tonight, but I don't believe you said that we would vote to, we voted to open the hearing, close the hearing, we discussed it.
So move.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, now that we got that out of the way, anything else to be said on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 400.
Thank you.
This will be available for you to pick up tomorrow morning in the selectman's office across the way.
I would say afternoon because the box usually doesn't-
I probably won't be here till Thursday, so I'll be here Thursday morning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Nice to see you again.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return back to the agenda. Let's see, appointments, reappointments, interviews?
You were gonna bring something forward, sir.
Well, I was gonna wait till town business for that because, but-
Have a good night tonight.
People are testing me. Yeah, we can go ahead on that. Rather than that, will the folks from the recycling center, please come up? Just the record, we're jumping to item 8(c) on here, which is a vote on the request to change the name of the Wareham Recycling Drop-Off Center to the John Dixon Recycling Drop-Off Center. Good evening. Would you identify yourselves to the board and state what your relationship to the recycling center is?
My name is Marilyn Musso, I live in Wareham and I am the recycling coordinator for my committee for town.
My name's Earl Russell, and I'm a longtime volunteer at the recycling center, live in Wareham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see both of you.
Yes, this was placed on the agenda at the request of the recycling committee. They recently lost one of their founding members, Mr. John Dixon, and in order to honor him in perpetuity, they've requested that we change the name of the recycling center to add his name to it, so that he will be forever memorialized in that fashion.
I think it's a great idea. I can't imagine the years and hours that he spent, as you all did, of course, so I would be happy to make the motion to name the Wareham Recycling Drop-Off Center Dixon Recycling Drop-Off Center.
Second.
Excuse me, I think it would be John B. Dixon.
John B. Dixon.
Okay, we'll make that notation.
Recycling Drop-Off Center. Thank you.
Make sure the sign is correct. Okay, anything further to be said on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Thank you very much. And while you're here, we've got you up for reappointment, so you might as well stick around.
All right, I'll stick around.
And we'll get back to the regular agenda and actually-
Earl's gonna stick around?
Going on that. He's gonna stick around, so why don't we move to reappoint them? You must have the paperwork.
Okay, Earl J. Russell, from East Road, Wareham, Mass. Understand, Selectman Wareham, have this day appointed you as a member of the recycling committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Thank you for stepping up again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both for your work there.
See you later, Marilyn.
It's very much appreciated. Okay, getting back to licenses and permits, we have requests from the Onset Bay Association for the use of town property for the Wareham Fireworks to be held on Saturday, July 1st, 2017, with a rain date of July 8th, 2017. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Kat Jones, Onset Bay Association.
And you're bringing back the fireworks out here.
We are. I'm very confident that we're gonna have fireworks-
We are. I'm, I'm very confident that we're going to have fireworks on July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very nice. We'll wait for him to reshuffle.
Take your time.
That's a good thing.
Maybe.
Maybe. I've gone through all the paperwork, all the permits, everything on here is required.
I'll move it.
You'll move it?
Yeah.
I like that.
Got it.
Somebody going to second the move it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0?
Would you like me to read off what it is?
We moved it. It's done. Now you can talk about it.
It's over.
Tell us the times, tell us the this, tell us the that.
Begin. A year ago, I came to you with a very different story, much to the disappointment of the whole community. Of course, everybody knows, we did not have fireworks last year. We ramped up our efforts. A new committee was formed and I, I want to say I'm really proud of the community for stepping forward to help out with this project. It was a huge learning experience for everyone involved and I think the community has a greater idea of what goes into a project like this, who runs it, how it's funded, and the ins and outs of it all, which I'm still navigating through myself. There's still a lot of details that we do need to iron out. Fundraising efforts have been incredible. We are incredibly close to our goal. A contract has been signed, a deposit has been sent in, so I'm 99.999% sure that it's going to happen because we'll never get that deposit back.
So something's going to blow up.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We'll be blowing some stuff up on July 1st, that's for sure. Hopefully July 1st, we won't have to use the rain date. That would be nice. I do need to speak with Chief Kevin Walsh about some things and municipal maintenance about some things, but I think we've got everything fairly straightened out, so.
You have a concert also as part of this, too. Did you mention that?
Do I have the go-ahead to do that?
No, it's in the, it's in there. It's listed.
Feel us. All right.
It's listed at 11:00.
We, we moved it tonight. We're just moving it.
I'm going to book a band. A band will perform from 1:00 to 4:00 at the band show during the day, unless I can get Kevin Walsh to agree to let us play a little later. Of course, we'll have festivities during the morning. The annual blessing of the fleet will take place at 10:00 from 10 to 1:00 at the pier. So I'm trying to create a full day of activities leading right up to the show itself at 9:00. So as long as I have permission to do all of those things, it's going to be a great day, so. Any other questions?
Would you like us to reserve good weather for you right now?
Please. Thank you.
And make the motion that it is a medium, no humidity day with no rain. You can have a few clouds, but they must be really high up and no fog.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
A light wind.
Second.
Yeah, and a light wind.
Fantastic.
Move it.
Is that for every Wednesday night in the summer as well?
Can I just get through one thing at a time?
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, just wanted to say thank you. I've been following your fundraising efforts on Facebook.
Thank you.
They're already legendary. Great work.
Well, it's been my pleasure. It's really been my pleasure. I enjoy what I do, so.
Thank you for taking this on, as well as the concert series and all the other stuff you do for the community, so.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
You can take a picture next week for the T-shirt.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an application from Cranberry Cottage 2, Inc. for common vic.
This is for, the business has been sold and changed.
Right.
So it's just a change for common vic license. Make a motion to, not a hearing.
I understand. There's a gentleman here.
I'm just going to make the motion and he can-
And don't ask him and he can talk about his-
Thank you.
And I should like to do the LOA?
No, I'd like to hear about him first.
Okay, then tell us about yourself.
My name is-
Teacher's always right.
I'm going to muzzle her. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Please identify yourself and tell us what you're doing.
My name is Chindara Chuen. Just moved here from Lowell, Mass. With my wife, Sophia. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today.
That's fine.
She has some illness after work, so.
I'm sorry to hear that.
We've been moved here one week already and we're planning to take over Cranberry Cottage from John Kunini because he retiring, withdrew it, and tried to go to South for retirement, so. I see it's opportunity for me and my wife to start my own business, so I grabbed it and tried to get my license and work and keep the tradition going and keep the local folk have fun, so.
You going to be open for breakfast and lunch only, or are you going to expand?
Only for breakfast and lunch for now. If I see potential to expand for dinner or certain specialty, I could do that later and ask for permission from the selectmen.
Okay, now we can have a motion, right?
Yeah, now we can have a motion.
Motion to grant a common vic license to Cranberry Cottage 2, Inc., DBA Cranberry Cottage, 246 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Say by granted a common vicular license. This permit is granted in conformity with the state's, excuse me, statutes and orders that's related there, too. Expires December 31st, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for doing your business with us in Wareham.
Thank you.
This will be available in the office tomorrow. Thanks.
Hope your wife feels better.
And last, we have a request from Philip Sheridan for the use of town roads for the Bill Sylvia 5K Road Race. Come on up, please. Identify yourself, please, and tell us what the event is about.
My name is Philip Sheridan and I'm interested in promoting the Bill Sylvia 5K Road Race and, and walk, as well as race, on Saturday, May 27th, starting at 10:00 a.m. at St. Anthony's Chapel on Galt Road in West Wareham. It's a 5K pattern around returning to St. Anthony's Chapel. Then the runners and walkers will return to the church hall at St. Patrick's for a dinner and award ceremony.
Thank you.
Did you do this last year, too?
Yes, uh, yes, it was done last year.
Or a couple of years ago?
I'm sorry.
A couple of, last year you did?
Yes, it was done last year. I wasn't personally involved and we, apparently the people involved last year didn't quite do all the paperwork correctly, so we're trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is this year.
Thank you.
Just for information, Cape Cod Bus for Life is the sponsor.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, they, we got ahold of them. They were going to send us some paperwork and also, because you, I think you signed off as being personally responsible.
Yes. There, we are in the process of getting insurance coverage that will hold the, the town at no fault, and it was supposed to be available today, but I-
It's fine. We heard about it.
Okay.
We're good.
Could I just ask one question?
Sure.
This goes down, looks like Main Street, Galt Road to Main Street, to County Road to Pierceville Road and back to Main Street?
That's right, back to-
Okay, it doesn't go down 28, right?
No, no, it does not go out on 28.
28's kind of darkened here and I wasn't sure. Okay.
It's the location.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Ready for motion?
Make a motion for the Bill Sylvia 5K Road Race Saturday, May 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And the road's covered as per the map.
Second.
Motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Again, the permit will be available tomorrow in the selectman's office.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. That takes care of licenses and permits. Do we have any requests to place signs on town property?
Not too many that I have here.
Okay. Ah, review of the townwide cleanup with Don't Trash Wareham. It's the trashiest women in town. I love it.
She's more trouble.
Oh my goodness.
He's getting us in trouble again.
You'll have to pay for that one.
Really are in trouble now.
I require some serious payment.
Yeah.
Good evening. This is the first time we've had the whole trash team been able to come to one of our meetings.
Would you identify yourselves to the record?
I will do that. So let me introduce them. We have our co-reporter here, Buckminster. And of course, Mary Bruce, and we have Judy Whiteside and Alan Slavin, and I'm Nora Bicki. So that's our core trash team. And we're all in one place and we're not picking up litter, which is-
Today.
Doesn't, doesn't happen very often.
I got it right here.
I'll leave later. So we are here to report on the annual cleanup and our other Don't Trash Wareham activities. So we base our litter cleanup, and this has been our third one, on the fact that litter attracts litter. And so we try to keep the town clean. And this year, we tried something new. We tried making teams, and the team concept seemed to work. We had people out there by the names of the Irish Rovers, the Main Street Trash Monsters, Trash Trolls, Selectment Sweepers, and quite a few creative names. So this was new and what we found was that people who had never participated before heard about getting a team together and got their neighbors and friends and so forth. So we think the team concept worked well, and we think that we had some excellent results. The first, of course, being aesthetic. The town looks better, much better. The second one is that we have increased awareness of littering and litter prevention in town. People are more aware of it. If there's anybody who lives in town that doesn't know Don't Trash Wareham, probably living under some rock someplace. So, so we, you know, the awareness is really important because, because, um-
You done now?
Okay, okay.
A bunch of red faces here having a little-
I know, I know. Because, okay, so.
She started again.
So the third and most important that I think is that we've created a sense of community for a single cause. We have so many people who contact us and if you see the Facebook posts, people are constantly either supporting us or concerned about certain issues. And so it's really nice to have that kind of community excitement. First, before we start anything else, I'd like to thank people. This year, we had students, scouts, families, churches, businesses, civic organizations, teams, and individuals, and they spent many, many hours over the Earth Day weekend cleaning up. Also like to thank the local stores because we do get trash bags donated and we give those to the student groups, the nonprofits, and some of the church groups. So this year, Lowe's Home Improvement, the Home Depot, Stop &amp; Shop, and the 7-Eleven on Glen Charlie gave to the Shangri-La group, so they got their own bags from there. We also would like to thank Covanta C-Mass for the second year of giving us the dumpsters, which we filled two 30-yard, is that what the big one is?
Yeah.
Yeah, we filled two of them up to the top, and many people brought their trash to their, to the transfer station. So that's a lot of trash for two days. And we wouldn't have been able to get rid of it if we hadn't gotten cooperation with C-Mass. Also, we'd like to thank the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, the Director of Municipal Maintenance, and the Harbor Master because they have all been supportive and we couldn't have done this without them. So I have a little, just, I want to read a little comment from one of the groups that went out to clean. The Shangri-La team, by the way, picked up 100 bags in two days in that area.
Yep.
And this is what one of the women emailed to us, the woman who coordinated it. She said, "We had a woman who came by and brought us a box of Joe and a dozen of donuts. A man stopped and gave the guys a bag full of Gatorade. People stopped and took trash bags to the dump for us since they were going there already. Lots of people stopped to thank everyone or honked and waved when passing. It made everyone feel appreciated, which goes a very long way." And I'd like to thank the guy in the red pickup truck who stopped and gave the selectmen on Narrows when we were cleaning. I thought Judy knew who it was. She was talking to the person and when the truck went off, I said, "Oh, who was that?" "I don't know." And she was left with ice water bottles. So that's part of that whole community effort, that everybody, even if people were not out picking up trash, they were out helping us. So that was great. Also, I want to give a message. We have a lot of kids that go out and they learn about how, the importance. And this was a team called The Little Oaks. And The Little Oaks, according to the mother, had a lot of fun cleaning their school and neighborhood. They met some great people, too. It was exciting for them to see so many people caring about the community. They can't understand why anyone would litter, and my seven-year-old kept saying, "I mean, we all live on earth. Why wouldn't you want to help it?" So that's the kind of feedback we get and we really appreciate it. And that, now that we're talking about kids, I just want to talk about the fact that we don't just pick up litter, though that's our main goal, I guess. We do have an education component to this. We recently visited eight fourth-grade classes at Deccus.
It's just thoughts that pop into your head when you talk about picking up trash.
She's just trying to hide her face so she doesn't break out laughing.
All right. Thank you, Judy. I'll get, I'll get you for this. Okay, so we do have the educational component. So this year, we went to eight fourth-grade classes. Like to thank Mr. Hudlett for inviting us for the second year and Principal Siemens for allowing us to visit. The fourth graders are eager to learn. They already know about things like decomposition and preserving the environment. When I walked into one class, they were talking about invasive species, which I had no idea fourth graders were talking, were learning. So they, they really understand about the environment, so it's a great age group to talk to. So we do talk a bit, and then each of the kids gets to fill out a worksheet about throwing trash from the car. Never throw trash out the car window. We make that important to them. So when, you know, we assume that when these kids grow up, they'll remember this. And then they, they, you know, do a little exercise. And then each child gets a litter bag to take home for their parents or guardians. And this year, each class is getting a plant pride, not litter poster from us.
That is awesome.
Isn't that cute?
Yeah.
Because, you know, our signs do say, "Take pride in Wareham. Take pride in Onset", so we're following along with the, the pride issue. So that's our education component. And I also want you all to know that we, we are concerned about the environment in other ways. And we have done coast sweep two years now, and we will do it again in the fall. So I want, just want to let you know that this September and October will be our third year. This is done through the Mass Office of Coastal Zone Management. Through the whole state, last year, there was 2,200 volunteers at 107 sites that picked up 44,703 cigarette butts, 50,996 pieces of plastic. And we know the plastic gets into the waterways and harms the birds, the fish, and so forth. So as part of that, when, when we as Don't Trash Wareham people see issues where we think that there might be some environmental issue, we have gone before to the Board of Health and they're very cooperative. We've gone to the Road Commissioners. So the whole community and the whole, you know, the whole system in Wareham is part of this, and we really appreciate their help. I would also like to talk about one more thing, and that's the House Bill 3528, because if there's one thing we pick up in Wareham, it's nip bottles. That's, everybody who picks up any trash anywhere tells us that they pick up nip bottles. Nobody is, is free from picking them up. And I see that now Fireball has come out with the larger size, the 100 mil. So we'll get to clean, to pick up the larger, larger nip bottles as well. So the H3528 is a bill for a five-cent deposit on nips. State Representative Randy Hunt from Fifth Barnstable, plus 30 other cosponsors from across the state, including our own, Susan William Gifford, are, they're the cosponsors. It's very well-received throughout the whole state. This will add to the current deposit bill. And it defines miniatures as any sealable bottle, can, jar, or carton, which is primarily composed of glass, metal, plastic, or any combination of those materials that has a cap, capacity of not more than 100 milliliters and is produced for the purpose of containing- an alcoholic beverage." So we are doing a petition. We're spearheading a petition process, you know, through the town. We have, with the cooperation of both Spinney and Wear Ham Library, we have petitions there that people can sign up. Kat Jones recently, just tonight, told me that she had... Has them at the OBA. She's already filled up three sheets. There's 25 to a sheet, and she's handed out petitions to people. And we have emailed petitions to plenty of people. It's up on the Facebook page. People can download their own copies. So what we're hoping is that we, you know, every town and other towns are doing this, will get enough petitions that our representatives, you know, will understand that they get... This is wide support. Anybody who would like a petition can email us at don'ttrashwearham@gmail.com. We'd be happy to send one along. The schools, the kids that were in the Builders Club, the Key Club, and the JROTC are definitely signing petitions with their advisors and teachers, and the 4th grade class is working something out to get the 4th graders that we visited to sign. So that's our last effort, or our current effort, and we would ask that the Board of Selectmen send in an official letter showing support for that bill. You want to read something for us?
Yeah, actually, I did receive correspondence from Representative Gifford. It was addressed to me. "Dear Chairman Titlebaum, I write to you today as a cosponsor of House Bill 3528, an act promoting the proper disposal of miniatures. It has become abundantly clear that the littering caused by the consumption of alcohol in 'nip bottles' is increasing. This has become a real problem in many communities, and it is time for the legislature to take action. I am pleased that House Bill 3528 has bipartisan cosponsorship support. A public hearing will be scheduled before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. Written testimony may be submitted to the committee in advance of the public hearing. I will keep you updated with any information concerning this legislation as becomes available. As always, if you have any further questions or need additional information, please contact me," and then it goes on with her contact information. "And signed sincerely, Susan Williams Gifford, State Representative, 2nd Plymouth District." Although I don't actually have it on the agenda for a vote, I would ask the support of the board to authorize me to send a letter out.
Second. I'm not going to second. I'll second by necessity.
You can second.
No, because I'm on...
She's on the committee.
Yeah, but this doesn't relate to...
There's no money changing hands.
This doesn't relate to Don't Trash, Wear Ham directly. It relates to town policy.
Second.
And there's no money changing hands or anything.
Second.
You can vote on this.
There's no way you can make a dollar out of this. You're okay.
Oh, yes, I could.
Well, you can pick up nip bottles now. That's it.
Yes, I could make a buck.
Well, that's after the bill passes.
Exactly. I don't know. I'm just going to challenge this. I'm not worried about it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Can I just say one thing before...
Yeah, yeah.
In order to run an army of more than 400 people, you have to be, one, organized. Two, know what you're doing. Three, organized. Four, be passionate. Five, be organized. Six, know how to do Facebook. Seven, be organized. Eight, know how to do all that social media stuff. And go visit 4th graders, speak at libraries, and do all sorts of things. I want to commend Nora Bickie, who has really done enormous amount of work. Without your backbone, we really wouldn't have been able to accomplish what the community has accomplished. And I just personally want to say thank you very much. First of all, you've got to be nuts to think picking up trash is fun, but it is. And I would like this board really to understand that she's the...
Yeah, we know. She's the driving force.
Okay. Well, thank you, but as you know, I can't do it without a team, because you can't do this alone. So while I maybe have organizational skills, I don't pick up trash as well as some people on this team, which leads me to my finish. We all know about the selectmen doing the cleanup on In-Narrows when Patrick was part of that cleanup, and you remember Patrick, your famous toilet that you found there?
Yes, I do. I also remember my friend and colleague saying, "The smallest place that anybody could fit. I'm the biggest body. Get down there. Get down there. You see down in there?"
She still does that.
You know, all these little people running around, and she's got to get the biggest one she can find and send them down a hole about this big, a rabbit hole.
Who else was going to pick that up?
Get down there. You go down there.
What I have for you right now was Peter's find, and yes, I'm struggling with it.
What are you trying to, up me? Want to up me or something?
Where's the rubber slushy thing?
This is... Let's see, shall we auction this off? Because I'm not taking it home.
It's all shined up.
We could.
Can we bowl with that sucker?
It's not. It's whoever tossed it from the car.
Oh, damaged it.
It did bounce a couple of times.
I think it should probably go on Town Council's desk.
It's all yours, because...
Where's the other piece?
Is Joe still here? Joe had to help me get it up the stairs. We ended up taking the elevator. Who knew that if you press 2 on the elevator, you go down to the basement?
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, we knew that.
We knew that.
Which is why we came out the back door, because we finally figured out you have to press 5 to get to this room. So anyway...
Don't press 13.
You never know what you're going to find.
Oh, yeah.
No.
And this was... There's a good picture of Peter bowling on the Narrows.
Yes.
I had to apologize for not being there. I love it. We... I had a great time last year, believe it or not, even though she stuck me in the rabbit holes. It was a lot of fun, really. I mean, everybody had fun. We were talking. We were joking. We're having a great time. Unfortunately, I had to work this year, and I missed it, which is, you know, kind of a bummer, because it was...
Next year, Patrick.
Yeah, 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 no. We'll plan it a little better next year. It was kind of an unusual thing that came up.
It wants you.
It came up relatively suddenly, and I couldn't get out of it. The other thing I want to mention, though, is, you know, you talk about all the cigarette butts. You know what amazes me? Isn't it amazing that people can drive along smoking a cigarette, lit, fire, and throw it out the window of a car? You know, I mean, it's like, you know, let's just throw this fire out the window.
Along with the alcohol.
I mean, we're lucky right now, because, of course, you know, it's been wet. But when it dries out, I mean, come on, there's a lot of leaves and stuff up there. It's amazing. I mean, I just... It boggles the mind that somebody could think it's okay to do that.
And to answer the question that somebody's going to complain about, yes, Coast Sweep counts the cigarette butts. They actually... The teams that pick up the beaches and riversides those days count the butts.
Count everything.
Count everything. So, you know, people say, "Well, it's really not that..." You know, "How do you know it's that many? Because we counted them."
I'm not even going to ask some of the things you count.
The things we have to add on as the craziest things we find, but all of that data goes to Massachusetts, and then they send it to Washington. So they have been keeping these records for years on how much gets collected and...
You know, the fines aren't high enough either, you know? We've got to deal with that someday.
You've got to catch people, too.
Yeah, state limits us, too, and then you go to district court, and they all get tossed, so...
You have to catch people, and unless you're, you know... I won't go there, but what smart person would throw something out in front of police? So you have to be pretty dumb to do that, right?
You have to be dumber than the average dummy.
I know. Everybody's... It does not happen often enough. So you can't... How do you... How do you, you know, how do you charge somebody if you don't see them doing it?
Well, I know there's signs up in New York. If you drive through New York, and the fines are exorbitantly high. I mean, and it's a weird fine. It's like $647 or something like that, some weird number.
How do we know things look?
Well, because I'm... These are the kinds of things that I remember, you know?
If that would stop people from littering, there would be no litter, because, you know, we have the $500 signs on the beach thing. There's a $200 sign on another street. It doesn't stop people. What stops people is litter awareness, litter education, and keeping the place clean so that litter doesn't attract more litter. And then there's social pressure, and then, you know, when a kid in 4th grade says to you, "Don't throw that on the ground," you know? That's social pressure, when your peers say it to you, when, you know, when we say it to other adults. So... And there's been studies, and I know you'll think I'm a geek, but I have done research on litter. I know. I have a book called Literology, A Literology, and it discusses all those things. And, you know, so we think we're doing the right thing. So does any of the other members? Jamie, Mary, do you have anything you want to say?
I've done good at being quiet. I didn't go on an angry rant this time.
Oh, you've done well.
You didn't bring her bags of nips. So thank you very much again.
I just have one comment to make. One of the more interesting aspects of the cleanup this year was that we had some citizens down in Onset who took it upon themselves to enter unoccupied premises, because they thought it was more than just a roadside cleanup, and emptied them out, and left a couple of interesting piles that they then expected the town to pick up. I know Selectman Whiteside and I drove around Onset somewhat perplexed, but they were gone by the next day, so I'm glad that they came back and disposed of this stuff. But I think we all need to make an effort next year when we announce these things to say, "Just roadside trash. It's not for cleaning up private property hog piles or going into unoccupied houses and cleaning them out." So maybe we can cut it back to 1 in 9/10 dumpsters next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Is something really heavy?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have repairs to private roads, Kahoon Road.
Do we have the paperwork?
Do we have everything we need for this this time around? Last time, we just had...
I believe so.
Something or other.
Yeah. And this one has the notices, $50, and the notices, the invoice we paid.
Michael, out in the hall, please.
Invoice wanting to be paid prior to any work being performed.
$50?
That's all. Let's... Yeah.
Okay. Ready to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. Go ahead and allow Baypoint Drive Kahoon Road to be repaired for municipal maintenance for its labor and materials for my own part will repair, which is $50.
Second.
Item we pay for before the work starts.
Second.
Motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 4-0-0. I'm going to hold off. We don't have a full board once again, so I'm going to hold off on the initiative projects, because I think everybody needs to hear what everybody else is planning. So we'll put that on again next week, and hopefully I can get all you in here. We put discussion with the Plymouth County Commission on in case they wanted to come and talk about it, and Town Administrator Sullivan tells me that they maybe would like to come back in the fall to talk about a couple of things, but right now, they're okay with it. So does anybody have any 48-hour business tonight? None? Next up, Town Administrators report.
Nothing really. It's just to remind you, I'll be out of state on the starting Thursday, and I'll be back in on Monday. During that time, Mr. Foster will be the acting town administrator.
Enjoy your time away. Liaison Initiative reports. Selectman Torpiano?
No, you know what? I'll wait till next week.
Okay. Selectman Whiteside?
Ditto.
The gentleman who won't wait till next week?
That's me. Planning Board met last night. Just for information for the public, the Baypoint Club basically is going to be on the agenda. They asked for a postponement until June 26th, and they've also filed for, hopefully, a final decision for July 31st. There was another project, 2707 Cranberry Highway, that was not finished last night either. And there's another project on Charlotte Furnace LLC. As of this time, they've withdrawn their petition, no reason given.
Who did?
What?
Charlotte Furnace LLC. It's another piece of property in Charlotte Furnace Road. They pulled their petition as of right now. This is stuff for Ken. Okay. Today, obviously, I've been a little sleepy here. I was in Boston all day with the MMA and Lieutenant Governor, other meetings. I just want to bring a couple of things up. I've sent mostly information to the town administrator. A week ago, I think, or maybe two weeks ago, I mentioned that the funds coming in in April really were looking good from what they were projecting. For the first couple of weeks in April, I believe we were up over $200 million from the, what they call the benchmark. We got in this morning and started discussing it, and the first thing I heard was that the April revenues basically cratered. Crater is a very interesting term to use. So they ended up, for the month of April, they are... There's a growth of about 1%. They projected all our budgets on 3.9% for this year and next year's budget. As of today, they're looking at a shortfall on the benchmark numbers of $460 million. So they're going to be looking very carefully at all the budget things to get through 2017. We were not able to get any answers if they were going to cut anything. Some of the earmarks for 2018 that are in the budget could disappear. And just to think that we're... It's not just Massachusetts. We discussed two other states with serious issues. One is Connecticut, who is looking at a $2 billion shortfall, and that's one of the states in this country that has the highest per capita income. Rhode Island is in serious trouble as well. So even though the employment is up and everything else, the actual monies coming in are down. So the 2019 budget, Mr. Sullivan's going to have to watch very carefully what goes on, is to see what happens long-term. I don't think we'll see much happen for 2018, because I don't think the elected officials want to do much, because the following year is an election year. But in 2019, it looks as if our initial thought process of being a bad year could very well be just that. There's some other projects and programs coming in. Derek has all the information. I'm not going to waste anyone's time here on it now. That's it.
Can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
Where are we on our home rule petition?
Home rule petition is still sitting in nowhere land. The DOR has not filed the report that was required in order to determine what the financial status is of people living in the parks and stuff, which is a piece that's needed in order for basically DCHD, et cetera, to even consider, you know, supporting the program. I will have an answer again probably next week. I spoke to him today when I was up there about it.
It's not going anywhere.
You know, I just have a feeling we're going to end up with another steel building. I'm doing everything I can, but, you know, without enough support from, you know, the elected representatives, our own is working fine as far as, you know, Mrs. Gifford.
Unless you can get Mark to do something, and it's not going to happen.
Well, actually, this time here, he is trying as well, but, you know, it's... They have to get this DOR report in order to have something on paper that shows dollar values in order to get this stuff included. And I feel like I'm batting my head against the wall.
You are.
Well, I just will tell you right now that if it is buried again, I will bring it back to another town meeting, because I am not...
We're not going to give up on it.
No, we're not giving up, period.
We just... Unfortunately, there's only about seven, eight communities that really have any major amount of mobile home parks, you know, actual units. Ossos and Cabra, I think, represent close to... I'm trying to remember, was 20 or 30% of the total in the state. So there's only about seven or eight, I think, that have any kind of numbers.
Central Mass.
Yeah.
Have a few hundred.
Auburn, Mass has some.
Yeah.
But I think Cabra had 900 a year ago, where it hadn't had 1,100. We represent a substantial portion. So if you have, say, like, nine communities with mobile home parks, and you've got 340 communities that don't have any, it's pretty hard to get support.
Yeah, you're kind of outgunned.
That's a nice way to put it.
Is there anything else?
I'll be on tell.
Mr. Sullivan has something for us.
I did. I'll be a bit of a...
Sorry.
Should I chastise you for talking while I'm speaking?
Absolutely.
No, it's...
I was reacting to him.
Sure.
You don't do that.
Okay. Let's end the food fight here. Why don't you go ahead?
So I do want to update you that the fireworks concert will have to end at 4:00. All right. Okay. Thanks.
I thought you had something good to say.
I was trying to squeeze in for a second.
Good luck.
Okay. Consent agenda. We don't have any bills, but we do have minutes from April 4th.
Rich doesn't want to get paid?
No.
Not this time.
She must be nice, huh?
I have minutes of April 4th. 1, 2, 3, 4.